Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Hedges.
Roger.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Mr. Mouskowski.
In attendance.
Chairman Horns.
Here. We have a, a number of agenda, you see the gentleman, any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, we doubt the amended agenda as it is presented.
So. Moving in properly, second, in terms of discussion, is right.
Mr. Hedges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Mouskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Horns.
Hi.
First on the agenda is the public hearing, the resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four about option of Virginia BDO, secondary six-year road plan. Mr. Pete's, uh, I assume you're going to help me give us a little preview?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable supervisors, staff and public. Yes, good evening, my name's Ron Beetz, BDO. Because Virginia requires that county board supervisors and the adjustment department from related six-year secondary road improvement plan and a priority list for secondary improvement, but nice public hearing being conducted with fiscal year twenty-twenty-three through fiscal year twenty-twenty-eight and the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year budget. This year's budget is the first year of the secondary security plan, which is course a fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Total amount budgeted in the plan is eight hundred and eighteen thousand, seven thirteen dollars over six years. And this total includes telefees and the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand four eighty and five hundred and sixty-three thousand, hundred and thirty-three dollars in unpaid road funds. I think last time we briefly went over the telefees and unpaid road funds. An updated plan, uh, we've followed priorities, that was actually about four currently on the plan. Number one is being about six thirty-four Kentucky Road. That will go to construction next summer. Route six thirty-three, seventy-point Road is next. It will go to construction also next summer. Not this one, next one. Uh, Route six twenty-four, Trimmer Shop Road is third priority and is scheduled for home services can next summer will be this.
Back up one click. You're, when you're saying next summer, you come at twenty-three.
Yes.
I thought I was saying the point was twenty-four. I mean, it's okay. I'm just saying.
Pardon me?
Does it begin or end in twenty-three?
Uh, we'll be doing work in twenty-three.
Okay, that's, that's, I think it's the earlier date than they had.
We have, you know, I did notice that, um, we were able to move some forward. Uh, from a date we previously shown, and in fact, I think it's in a fourth.
Not in my district, but I hear a lot about.
Okay, oh. Well, we'll be, uh, you know, if y'all go along, which is of course your choice, we'll be doing this three roads next summer. Um, and twenty-twenty-four, Route six seventeen, West Spring Morris Road, it would be the next priority. And, uh, in twenty-twenty-five, Route six twenty-seven, East St. John's Church Road. And in twenty-twenty-six, Route six twenty-one, Green Bull Road would be only five minutes, we would anticipate, so. Getting that work done, and you know, with that, I guess the reality is we really, we are you folks, really don't have any money available after that until twenty-twenty-seven. On your, on your six-year plan. We'll mention, uh, for paved roads on your plan, six hundred West River Road, we are actually working on that right now. And I'll probably be finishing that up in about thirty days. And unless there's questions, that's what I have for you this evening.
You, Mr. Mouskowski, your question from the last visit here.
We, we had discussed maybe adding that to the list for next year's hearings since the funding so far.
Yes, as, uh, and we won't forget, got it in my notes, the send the minutes of the board meeting. And, uh, if that would be the board's, uh, you know, decision that certainly we would, we would include that, uh, approximately twenty-twenty-seven, uh, next year.
Only new paid part of thirty, is that reflective is going to be put in on those little markers that they've got on the road, or is that just?
On Route thirty, the little markers that are out there right now, uh, they are tamelout to temporary strike.
Strike, okay.
That's.
And folks thought it was for the reflective markers.
We kind of like those for the temporary markings and we as an agency, we approve contractors to use those instead of spray paint. Or state, they can do that as well, uh, for the final code. And of course reflective markers, permanent ones will be installed.
You can leave the rubble strips out.
Pardon me?
You can leave the rubble strips out.
You'd be surprised how many people I get to talk to about that since I've handled the, um, work orders that come to the residency.
And we've been told that they are saving lives, but is, is it, have they been out there long enough to really determine that?
You know, the information that I have been made available, me, uh, does show anywhere from thirty-one to fifty-one percent reduction in, and serious overage. And I think I'm a driver like anybody else. And only one time coming, come to the courthouse tonight, I stray and get lit up, hit, hit the edge line. Before you know it. And, uh, this is a statewide thing. I don't know our district, uh, I don't know how we stand against the other eight districts in Virginia.
The more rural you get, the less you seeing it out far west, you not seeing it that much. And I'm talking about really when you get back in the woods here, it's not that much.
No, um, but it is a statewide initiative that's going to be on every primary road. At the state and. As I try to explain to people who live close by and those kinds of things, you know, they get lit up too, noise, um. You know, as you, as it gets become statewide, uh, my expectations are people do a lot better job standing between the lines because I do myself.
Does the rule of unpaid dirt roads, you know, that fund, is that separate from those?
No, this is.
And this is.
We kind of strayed to Route thirty, but this is your secondary six-year plan.
So what is the product area?
Vehicles.
Vehicles for that fit. Okay, so I guess you do periodically traffic counts?
Yes. In fact, I think I ordered maybe a day, and I'm sure he could tell me, he knows probably had that just look at.
Is that an average? I mean.
Yes, it's an average and daily count.
So if you have this, if, if you're counting for five days, if we have to be two hundred and fifty vehicles to follow. I, I just got a call probably a week or so ago. I actually spoke to Mr. McKnight and I didn't have anything to write with when, when I was talking to him. So.
Yes, it's, uh, it's known as an average annual daily prep count.
Okay.
And, uh, so it's, uh, it's an annualized number. Which generally means on any given day, you probably wouldn't be that exact number as much as would be an average of.
How often do you do this?
Um, depending on the classification of the road, I think we're supposed to do them every one, every five years, no matter how large or small. And I noticed the traffic cameras are out. We get a too big look ahead, good law and things going on in our residency. And, uh, there's counts going on right now today, this week. I don't have the list written tonight, but, uh, I ran across them all.
Very good, thank you.
Not before we do the following.
Okay, we've been running all through the resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four of the public hearing. Individuals wishing to speak, please come forward, you have three minutes. Please state your name of the district. Anyone representing a group, you have five minutes. I'll go ahead and open it up, a public comment. As far as we have any more that's.
No one's been our district.
If there's no one wishing to speak, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move adoption of resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four.
So. Moving properly, second, in terms of discussion. Mr. President, please call it off.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Mouskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hedges.
Hi.
Chairman Horns.
Hi.
Moving into work session now, we'll have the gentleman, Mr. Fred Pearson.
Are you done?
Yeah. We're getting into it, but, uh. We have, uh, we're feeling pretty, pretty comfortable with the software now. Uh, we know how it calculates and how it works. We've entered the new rates to kind of re, we entered rates kind of by a bulk sudden in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we have reviews and sales now. And we're going to, we've set up, uh, we know how to set up the tables and the system. We know how to put the land into calculate, what's going to calculate. So we make a pretty good headway. Uh, we've looked at some property sales, um, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one property sales. Uh, and land is showing about a forty percent increase now. Homes, uh, that's in the districts, about fifty-four percent on, and West Point, uh, homes in West Point about forty-one percent. Keep in mind, that is two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. But we're not supposed to be shifting more over when we get more sales in two thousand twenty-two, just to look at two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two sales. And then as we get more sales in two thousand twenty-two, we're mostly just two thousand twenty-two sales. But anyway, that's where we are now. So when I talk about these figures, I say the district district board, it's going to probably be higher than that, like just two thousand twenty-one sales.
You don't think it's cooling in a little bit?
Uh, maybe in two thousand twenty-two. So far, we haven't used any two thousand twenty-two sales. We will, but we only had like three secondary sales. Move that behind. Uh, but as we get more sales, we'll switch over just two thousand twenty-one and look at two thousand twenty-two. And then before we send notices out, we'll look at only two thousand twenty-two sales to see where we are. Uh, I think, I think there, uh, I talked to Karina today and she said that the clerk's office said the transfers have slowed down quite a bit. Right recently, but anyway, we'll see. But we were like whatever the market shows us. But the market did go up quite a bit from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. And that's why I'm predicting this will probably be a little higher than that. Um. We have split, we have copied over Karina's files, we got current file, look in the three assessments. Uh, we set up the new tables and rates in there. Uh, we'll look at the sales again. And we'll probably increase the rates to reflect, uh, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two sales. And, uh, we're going to keep checking that until we send notices out, and that's probably through October of two thousand, uh, twenty-two. So we've done that, uh, but that's pretty much where we are right now. So we're moving along. Anytime anybody wants to see any ratio of work that we've done so far, it's open to the public, we'd like to, to look over, work with any comments on property owners. Uh, so this is where we are. We're going to be checking sales and for the next few month, few months, it's going to be rolling forward.
It's great to get it open like it, you gotta help.
We want to get it right and we want input.
Any questions?
Just the people still aren't getting tags, that's all. I mean, you say it's almost done.
We're, we're getting tags mailed back in.
Uh, we haven't even gotten yet. I mean, Stuart and I personally haven't got our tags yet, no, they haven't both of them are here. So I don't know how we're supposed to send them back if we never have.
I'm, I'm going to put you a card. I have time to check it.
A little lack of my gigs.
Okay.
I got mine.
You did?
That's good.
I'm really good.
By sometime.
That's what I said when he said last time.
We'll get, we'll pass that in five seconds through if there were.
And I think you said it's going forward if you don't send a tag.
That's correct.
Well, mine is Mark's. Data is sufficient to make it a break.
That was correct. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Next up, we have an update from this Mr. Blake on the Skinsu Storm.
All right, thank you. Good evening, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Okay, great. Uh, so there's been no, uh, updates since the last update I gave in February. Um, we've submitted and got our permit approved from the SCC back on the mid-March. Um, permits still in process are the Virginia DEQ stormwater and the county land disturbance, which we are anticipating will get mid-May. And if all goes well, we anticipate starting construction, um, in May of this year with all operations, uh, to be, uh, started, uh, the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-three. Any questions?
The, um, statewide, I'm sorry, we share in one way, conform with statewide utility exemption from county of billments. What is, what is required? I see that hasn't been satisfied yet. Did you hear me?
Are you talking about the, the DEQ?
The last permitting process. It says conform with statewide utility exemption from county billments.
Right, that, right, that both will conform. We're not doing anything outside of the norm, basically. It'll conform with the, um, utility exemption. The standard.
So basically, that's, that's all already done?
Yes, it's already been submitted. Where do you?
I can give you a brief update of what, and I'll be glad for the letters that we received. Um, they've gotten comments from the county, comments from Bowman, who does our ENS review, um, and utility review. Um, they've got comments from DEQ that they have to address. They'll need to resubmit, um, for another review, what's, these items have been taken care of. Um, they still have several bonds that they have to submit letter of credit. Um, and all of that will have to be reviewed by, um, Mr. Roberts or his staff. But I'll forward those letters to y'all tomorrow and say, you, you know which comments that they still need to take care of, those several of them.
Any questions? Ms. Bright, thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Thank you, Mr.. Next, we have Jake Graves, give us an update on King William Fire Department Water Rescue.
Good evening, are you guys? Well, good. Uh, I'm here to present a suggestion to establish a water rescue program in the county. Based out of, uh, King William Fire Station One, the career, uh, staff station, the funding will be provided through a donation from my sources. So, uh, to the county, for the fire department to be able to take the function. So one of the assets that we desperately need when we need it, that we do not have available to us, especially in the center of the county, is water rescue. This can be still water, moving water, swift water, or stormwater flooding. These come in are in a rate of disasters, I guess, if you could, uh, or if you will, they, they come in at a time that you're not expecting them. They can be, uh, they can be created during, um, storms in areas where you normally don't have water. They can just be normal boating incidents on the river or on a large area of water. Currently, we have, um, responses that come from Henry County and West Point. West Point's boat is not necessarily close to us and it's also designed for deeper water so they can get on New York. Um, and so up on our end of the county, they would have to connect to their boat, drive it all the way up here, put it in and then try to, try to help us with it, which in an incident where we're dealing with water rescue times of business, as you, as you can imagine, we, we just don't have that asset available to us in the county right now. Um, we're bordered on the north and south by the Madepanon, Temaki rivers, uh, the way of the road. We're around thirty-five miles each river. And, um, I don't have the calculation for the total, uh, river mileage with all the curves. Um, things that go, yeah, all the boundaries of the river is a lot more than thirty-five miles each way. So we're looking at seventy miles of waterway that someone could be at risk. Uh, we have no county assets to respond to these calls at this point in time. Uh, there are actually forty-three streams in King William County that are named, which all, all of them can become a water rescue incident and flooding situations. And we're also bordered on the outside of the, um, rivers by Carolina, Henry, the King and Queen, you can't, um, all of those counties would benefit from the ability of us to put in on our side of the river to help them with the rescue and vice versa. The logistics, uh, number one is properly training personnel. That would be covered in the, the program. We would work with, uh, Virginia Department of Fire programs to train our folks in the program that is currently, uh, being pushed as the state standard. The proper, uh, personnel, uh, personal protective equipment, PDFs, uh, cold water suits, uh, abrasion, abrasion resistant suits. And, uh, boats, the trailer and all the things that go along with that, the, the motor. The boat motor will be an inflatable hard bottom boat that can go in the shallow water, uh, with all the sticks and stumps and stuff up on this end of the river. As well as all the way down in New York, those boats do well everywhere. The motor is a very simple tiller steel, tiller, uh, steer engine with a prop and a prop car, which will run in the waters that we have up here all the way down to the river. And, um, other than annual maintenance and if we incur damage, the, the cost of maintenance of all the equipment is pretty minimal. And once we establish a water rescue team, we'll be able to utilize funds through VDM and other grant programs to maintain and purchase new stuff as it, it becomes obsolete and it reaches its end. This will buy, uh, provide, as I said, the capabilities of water rescue to the citizens and patrons of county, keep road and have more and more people on, on the river and ponds and streams and things around. Currently, um, West Point and, as well as the sheriff's office, um, work with us on any kind of water rescue issues that we have. However, we'll be moving towards trying to get some more of this specific training for those close entities, especially since West Point is on the river. And, uh, the sheriff's office is almost always going to be present when we have a rescue situation. The program initially will provide, uh, funding for ten qualified trained rescuers and all of the equipment that is needed for the program to, to keep going and be launched. Um, we kind of skipped through one of the slides earlier. Since two thousand seventeen, which is five years back, um, King William dispatched about seventy-two water-related incidents. And on all seventy-two of those, I can't tell you that they were swift water or the water pools or.
None was swift water.
Yeah. Um, but there, there is definitely a need to be able to access the patients. And this, uh, you can never predict when it's going to occur, but when it occurs, you need an asset to be able to get to the folks to, to help them out. And all of this will be, uh, covered by a donation left to the King William Fire Department from the estate of Mr. Charles Strickler, Hunter the Third. He is a, he was an avid outdoorsman and believed strongly in preservation. And he, uh, he and his family, uh, spoke with his wife and the executor of his estate, was also a family friend. And they, they were adamant that we invest this, uh, money into something to promote and continue the service of, of the county and protect the citizen. And that's it. Unless you guys have some questions.
Of course.
Go ahead.
You're doing ten people trained.
Yes.
You're buying a boat.
Yes.
And all the equipment for fifty grand?
Yes.
Were you still in the boat?
No. So it's, it's an inflatable boat. It's like, uh.
You still, I, I'm thinking I have more motives than I know what they cost.
Well, we, uh, I have, I've quoted all the equipment, uh, and without contract pricing on the actual suits that everybody wears.
Right.
Um, we're within that fifty thousand. The actual boat trailer and motor coming off of a contract price uh, out in North Carolina, and they supply the boats for Northern Virginia Company to run the Potomac River. And it is a Zodiac style boat with an outboard tiller still, tiller steer engine. Uh, so there's no wiring. It's just the, the, the motor, the battery and the connection to that and the boat itself. Uh, the boat motor and trailer delivered, um, with everything on it, ready to go, is, I believe, around twenty-three thousand dollars. And then you've got, we're going to purchase a couple kayaks paddles and then all of it. The rest of it is going to be invested in the equipment and suits. And that will leave us somewhere around about eight, uh, ten thousand dollars for the training.
And ten qualified present person.
Correct. That, that, the, the cost of the training will provide us with ten personnel fully qualified and trained. That's from start to finish. They have to pass a swimming test.
I mean, I don't like you didn't do this that deep, but how many would that put out for rescue? Only, what do you figure to put out for this?
The intent is to spread those folks across the three ships.
I understand. That's why I'm asking, how many would you really send over the rescue?
Well, it would be anybody available at the station. And then we would also incorporate West Point in water rescue, of course, because they have the asset. So we would naturally go ahead and request them to get them in route. So they would enter, you know, intervene with us somewhere from, you know, Walberton or even come all the way up here if we needed them. Uh, and then the sheriff's deputies that were, are trained that would be able to assist with us. So you have the, the training people who can actually go out and do the rescue, which technically, when you go out to do that, you got a couple of people on the boat who need to be trained to be out on the boat and on water. Everybody else needs to be trained on, on shore, which we can train those boats without going into all the, the water rescue training and all that. The intent is to cycle this annually until we have everybody trained to go out on the boat. So.
So the boat itself, what does that hold? Two men with potential of rescuing victims?
Should hold one now. It'll hold more than that. I mean, you could put four people on there with a victim. And then we'll also, in, in part of the package, we priced out a skid, which is basically a I don't want to minimize its value, but it's like a, a tube behind the boat. It looks like one of those inner tubes that you pull the kids around on. But it's open in the middle and it's got a netting that lays in the center so that you can put a victim in it and pull them behind the boat. So you go a rescuer and a victim in that and just travel them back. They have, you know, spinal injuries or whatever. So you can, you can haul a lot more than what you think this, but I think they have a eighteen, hundred pound payload.
I'm okay with this. You just need to look at your points of entry. There are not as many as you think.
Yeah, yeah, we, we know. And that's, that's part of the reason why we.
They're more in King Point.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, and like I said, that's part of the reason why we, we want to have it up here. It's because between us and West Point is a long ways and there, there are very limited access points and we don't have any assets um, east of the county in King Point. They don't have a water rescue program anymore.
Map and I, no longer. They were that King Minew.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were more of a recovery team versus swift water or water. I don't want to say swift water because. I don't want to say swift water because that's misleading. Most of the time around here, we're not going to have swift water. But we, we may have a water rescue or a water situation that normally isn't there when you have flooding, which you guys have all went through.
Yeah, biggest thing you're going to have is flooding.
Yeah.
Like Zora up in there, it's a big flooding area.
Yeah. And down towards the, the Amaki, you know, that lets us get on the reservation. We can, we can run through land that normally is farmed, you know, with the boat to get the people if we need to, even if just get them out of their homes. So.
A question that came in from somebody who's listening in, but the training will include operating the boat.
Yes. Well, that's, that's a separate training, but that is part of it. Yeah. They, they will, everybody, everybody that is employed at Station One will go through the boat operating.
Basic is required by everybody.
Yeah, yeah. If you're in the boat and you're running it, you gotta have a class. It doesn't matter if you're in the fire department.
No matter what age you are, you will let it go.
Yep.
So this, this Mr. Hunter was, is he a King William citizen?
He is not. He was, he owned a lot of property in King William County. He spent most of his elected time, his choice was in King William County down. He had a huge estate down there where he spent most of his time whenever he had a choice.
Very nice, Kevin.
Yes.
So for, for our staff, what's required of us tonight? Do we need to approve this or you just need to fully develop it and bring it back to us for approval?
We plan to bring it back when, when we're through consideration.
Well, I would certainly view this favorably as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Redd? All hazards mitigation plan?
Okay, so tonight we have the all hazards mitigation plan that you should have received and have. This was done in conjunction with the Minnesota Planning District Commission. They were funded through FEMA and the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to assist the guy all the localities, all the Minnesota to update the original all hazard mitigation plan. In order to remain compliant, it needed to be updated. And it required the local governments to develop and submit a mitigation plan to reduce natural hazards and serve as a guide for decision makers. And some of the localities have already adopted it. Exeter, Gloucester, West Point. Middlesex just presented it, so I don't know the outcome of that. But there are nine, including two tribes that need to adopt this. With this adoption, the citizens are eligible for post-disaster hazard mitigation funding, hazard mitigation grant program and FEMA fund, funding. Without it, they're not. Also, it gives them access to blood insurance and federally backed mortgage accessibility like SBA and that type of thing. We've had regular meetings with the local planning team. Most of the jurisdictions have got together with the, the district commission and we've got outreach. And they have also worked some with the tribes on what I understand. And this is what they've come up with. They did remove a few things from the previous tsunamis, volcanoes and landslides. They add communicable diseases and they combined some of the hazards like winter storm to include ice and snow and to winter weather, coastal ravine and ditch flooding hazards to just flooding and then extreme cold and extreme heat to extreme temperatures. That's a few of the, the changes that have been made. So if we consider it and approve, we'll bring a resolution before you at the, at the twenty-third meeting.
Next up, we have Mr. Steve Hudson to talk about VISA.
Good evening. So the county has an agreement with VISA currently for debris monitoring and removals. This is for the event of natural disaster, hurricanes, tornadoes, that sort of thing. VISA on their part contracts the service and the contracts they have with their subcontractors needed renewing. So they procure those services, sign them to new contracts and therefore we need to sign a new contract though, because our contract actually specifies those contractors. This does not obligate us to spending more money. It's just allowing us to use those services. Didn't have it in Zest or that we're going to be calling up VISA who will help arrange arrangements with these contractors. Then you will come up with a, a task order and a plan with those contractors.
Any questions, Joe? The action is for Joe. I'd like you to sign the document.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move that we authorize. So.
And ask for any comments, considerations on the VISA transfer site at the high school. Discussed on a number of nice traffic issues and safety concerns at that site. What are we going to do about it? We've researched a number of different ideas. Right now, my thinking is that an expansion of that site would be the best solution. And if you look into your attachments, the first attachment, a concept sketch, that is what we have, I have spent most time discussing with Dave Mackman, Director of VISA. This sketch was actually first proposed, I believe he said, ten or twelve years ago. And at that time, the reason it did not move forward, according to him, is that we could not get the Q to agree to this plan. This plan is basically an access road loop that goes around what is there right now. It would add a compactor that could be approached from either side and it would allow for traffic to pull forward to the, where the existing compactor and behind is, rather than having to queue, start moving much further back and then have to do a full circle turn with trailer, which really causes the backup. This access road crosses briefly the RPA zone and the wetlands as delineated. We confirmed a couple of weeks ago with DQ that they would allow that. It's administrative approval for that minimal crossing. And for this sort of project, there's a number of items in that checklist that they have allowed to be approval. And they gave that confirmation. So that has, that site with that concept seems to have the best thing for a buck as far as least amount of construction, but giving us what we want, which is not having anyone back up and cause vision and other safety concerns there right on thirty. It is still right in the middle of central garage, which makes it the most convenient for all the residences there. And the idea would be possibly to make some enhancements at the airport site to funnel some more of the trailer traffic there. The initial idea that Mr. Maggie and I had talked about was possibly since this transfer site expansion would require a great deal of planning, design and then construction. It might be possible to move more quickly at the airport site, do a minimal amount of clearing and a little bit of lane enhancement to start funneling some of the traffic there. However, a high level cost estimate, put that at two hundred thousand dollars. So maybe it would be best. I'd like to see your ideas on this to just move forward with the transfer site.
The immediate question actually is, they originally project to be between forty-six thousand. Then you've got a local contractor that immediately spent the old room in.
Right. So twenty years ago, this project cost two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not so sure we know, do we? Because we don't know what we're going to run into.
Well, we don't know a hundred percent what we're going to run into. We know a little bit better that it's not right on top of the landfill. So we don't have quite the same ground to deal with, but we still have to do some studies around there. This is the direction we want to go.
What are you estimating the studies have been about to, to find out what we're going to pay? I, I don't think we've got a lot of choice but to do something.
No, I would have to talk to them about what their estimate is. We started to and they said they have to get in there, which caused us wanting to start. So I wanted to get your ideas first before we started going on site.
So this site is, is pretty close to the location of the compound that is right now, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we're going to create another entrance?
Right now, it would be to. Right. Same entrance, right? We might improve the turn lane. Yes, it's possible. But one of the biggest problems right now is that the queuing, there, there's no place to queue. Some people queue out onto the turn lane. Whereas this would alleviate that. It's a possibility in the future. We've discussed it briefly to a new bus garage. If that ever moves from its current location, then we might be able to use a little more of the land that's already there that is under the school's purview.
This original plan was, like I said, done years ago, but didn't we now acquire ten acres?
We did.
That's not the side, it's more back.
That's sketch number two, one is just behind it. That whole plan we devised before we discovered that the land was that nice. And that's still viable. So, but right now we don't see where that would be, any, any pluses on what was, was right here.
The location of that ten acres, is that behind the high school where that practice field is?
I thought it was. It's touching this one. I mean, all of it is adjacent to the school property.
It's a, it's a practice football field there. And I think it bugs up to, to this property. And just out of curiosity, I'll walk back there sometime. And it's actually a graveside back there. It's, it's probably kind of the foil graves, but I'm, I'm pretty sure this is.
This is the, the piece of property that's behind this that was part of sketch number two. You're going to drop down and. What is the landfill?
And it runs back up against close to Ternavalia.
So really I wanted to know if, what, any other questions on it and is this, with this kind of price tag, the direction we want to go? Right. And part of the problem right now is that, as we're looking for just any kind of a cost estimate to be able to discuss with you, that the contractors that VISA has talked with don't want to put a price on anything because they don't have the materials and they don't want to say a price. They don't know what it's going to be by the time that gets needed.
Has there been any looking to a new location?
A little bit, yes. That's round. I've looked around a little bit, but I've also talked with VISA and he confirmed to me that a new site was still going to cost much more than this.
Can it be any of this be done in-house? Like we did some of the stuff around this complex.
There, there remains potential for us to do some earth moving and in fact, if we need to fill clay or something like that, then we might be able to take it away from the airport site and put it here.
I think as far as the immediate guidance, my, my recommendation would be that, yes, we look forward ways to move forward with this plan. I would focus on the central garage site. Wouldn't necessarily direct. We know that this is the most immediate and growing problem. While there might be potential to improve airport, I think resources being as precious and scarce as they are, I think we're, we're better served to focus our efforts on this central garage site right now.
So, so the airport site, part of that improvement was another compound to get people in and out of that basket.
Right. That was part of it, was another compactor to clear the land and the middle.
Is that, that site could pose another problem, traffic problem. So if you increase the volume of people using because the way it backs up and they change in the, the downstairs. Oh, that's not a priority, but still keep that worth in. If you're going to look at alternatives, it does need some improvements. We didn't want to talk to Mr. Magnet about enhancing some of the services since he's retired then. So I think, I think he's good with us. Any other questions?
Thank you.
The board is in the general fact that you see there is an overview financial report for FY twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, one of the things I do want to make sure that the board is aware that these figures are based on postings to revenues and expenditure GL accounts and have not been validated with cash by bank reconciliations. And the best way to explain this is if, I, I do know that when finance was worked, county finance was working on the bank reconciliations for FY twenty twenty-one, there were deposits that were in our bank account that were never posted into our system, which means that is revenue that was not posted. So I just want to make sure that everybody does understand that these figures could change once we can get these bank reconciliations caught up. Overall, the revenues are on target with projections for FY twenty-two and are similar to comparison to prior year's collection. The majority of local non-property tax revenue sources are paid monthly and will continue to pose revenue to the remainder of this year. PayPal was, oh, I'm sorry, Chris, could you go to the revenues? Sorry. And I know that's so tiny, but I know y'all have that in front of you.
That's okay.
And I might have put one on. So let's see, PayPal was due March first and results in fifty-two thousand, three hundred eighty-one more in revenues than we projected. Civic fee revenues have increased based on increase of cases and civic, uh, civil processing. And I wanted to give you guys a chance. I'm sure y'all have already looked at this. If you had any questions for me regarding the revenues to date two, before we go to the next slide.
So food and beverages is down?
Actually, food and beverage is up, I believe. Well, we are, yes, yes. And we still have, that would probably only include probably February. Because March is, would have been to April twentieth, I believe. Because March is, would have been to April 20th, I believe. For the next slide. And this is a look at our expenditures. Our expenditures are 72.71% of the adopted budget and we are in target for year end. Are there any questions about expenditures?
And this is a report we can expect.
Next slide. You know, one more, Chris. In summary, the county's revenues and expenses are consistent with budgeted estimates. Real estate property tax is our largest general fund revenue source. I must correct what I have stated in the presentation. I have put in there the true is second half calendar year 2020 was due December 5th. I had it flip flopped. And first half of calendar year 2022 will be due June 25th. The cash flow pattern listed in is for the general fund only. It reflects revenues versus expenses each month. At year end, the remaining will increase or decrease our unassigned fund balance. Our prior CAFR for FY2020, which is our only current, our most current financial, audit and financials. The unassigned fund balance was 6.3 million. Are there any questions? So typically, right now, if we were to say our year just ended March 2022. 6.1 million would be running into our unassigned general fund. But we have a lot of expenditures still coming. We have a debt service that we have to pay. So don't think that, that is where we're at as of March 22nd. So.
That's the cash flow. That's not the year investment.
No, it is our cash flow. And that is just for the general fund also too. Not, no other funds are included in that. Okay, the next slide. Okay, this is a summary of our capital projects for FY22. Invoices for Parks and Recreation, Rockwell Field and Gravel are expected post in April 2022's expenditures for the completion of that project. We're still awaiting the availability for the facilities vehicle for purchase. And several capital funded projects are included to roll forward in our FY23 capital budget. And that includes our radio replacement amount that we had budgeted for FY22. The brush truck, the well pump house and broadband. Those. That funding that was appropriated for FY22 was, is not intended to be used this year. So we'll roll that forward. And that has been included in the FY2023 capital approved budget. And any other funds that we feel at year end. If we still have some funds in there that are remaining that we need to come to the board in October, we'll try to come in and go ahead and present those funds. If the board does, if we do nothing with this, the funding in there, like historic build, a building for the 36. If we do nothing with this in our capital project, it remains in the capital fund. It is no longer, when we moved that money in there several years back. It then lived in the capital fund, no longer in our unassigned fund, no longer in our general fund. So until the board says something different, we leave it in the capital fund.
And broadband has been there for several years.
Right. And we got that appropriated and then.
The next slide. The proper response has increased this whole year by 113,224. 200,000 was utilized to fund FY22 capital projects. That those projects included the life packs, gravel at 360 Complex and Station One and radio replacement. Proffers cash is collected from the developers to go towards public facilities and infrastructure needs to serve the new development. Are there any questions about proffers? All right, next slide. The water in the sewer fund make up the utilities fund. There's been growth in both funds this fiscal year. Water increase of 388,129. And sewer increase of 488. Revenues generated in these funds include water charges, wire connection fees, water meter sales and sewer connections.
My reading this right, it's effectively doubled from last year?
We're hoping to use part of this fund balance to help us with our water pump project too. Not all of it. Poor Steve. Okay, no questions then? All right, next slide. Arba funds have been appropriated from the total of 3,330, 30,798. Arba funding, this, this, that amount is going to cover from March 3rd, 2021 through December 3rd, 2024. The county has expanded 191,823 from March 3rd, 2021 through March 31st, 2022. We have submitted our annual report to the treasurer department. Uh, the county received the first half of funding June 24th, 2021. And we are expected to receive the second half no earlier than 12 months after the first payment. Any questions?
We're not holding anything contingent on getting that second.
Um, I would say that the only thing that would be held is the broadband, which we haven't, we haven't spent any of the broadband money anyhow.
If we, if we go on contract, we would have to check it written shortly thereafter.
Believe they're gonna be invoicing us as they were.
Yeah, we could probably get some kind of purchase order though, to do know some type of an idea how much it's worth. That would be good. Just so we don't run out of good ones in our book. All righty, next slide. The local funding, the social service remains on target for FY22 budget estimate. But through March 2022, the locality has funded the social service fund 95,998. The monthly average local share has been 12,000 per month. We anticipate that monthly amount to increase at this point due to pass-through utilization for remainder of the months of this fiscal year. Pass-through changes the local match from 15.5% to roughly 32%. Pass-through begins to be utilized once the county has hit the state base allocation. We anticipate to still remain within the local share budget for FY22. And we are currently working with ESS to establish an estimate of remaining funds that will be needed for FY22. Last year, we did come to the board at the end of the year, requested 74,000 increase. I do not expect us to have to ask for any additional funding for local share for this year. Any questions? All right, next is we have our looking ahead. We will continue to monitor the budget to actuals and have begun preparation for year end. We have requested a cutoff date of May 13th for purchase order requests from all department heads and staff. And we are currently unable to schedule preliminary audit work for our FY22 until the status of bank reconciliation completion from July 2021 to date is established. Typically by now, we have, when we have scheduled that with our auditing firm. The auditing firm has told us that under those circumstances, will they even be on site until we can give them an idea about where we are with bank reconciliations. That being said, our FY2021 audit remains incomplete pending completion of the bank reconciliations for that time frame for FY21. Any questions or any direction you would like finance to go?
I enjoy the visibility of this.
Yeah, especially when you're still here thinking about a budget for 2023.
Envisioned incomplete audits. No, I like this. So, yeah, I mean, I think as far as. Direction on form of this presentation, I think what you, what you've got is, is great. Um, I think that just maybe one or two more. While we're ready to shuffle off, there's more to plan, I think, but we can refine it a little bit. But I think. I think it's pretty good.
I enjoy the comparison to the previous one.
Yeah, yeah, it helps me too.
Some of the. Do you think it's over 100%? I think you've touched on a few of them. Just make some notes at the bottom, how that, why that happened.
Is this for your revenues?
Well, certainly.
Recreation study discussion.
Ladies and gentlemen, talk about something that's fun. But very important, the quality of life in this community, and that's recreation. Like to spend just a couple of moments tonight talking about a, a, a plan to move forward. And expand some of the opportunities that we already have in the county right now. First, let me just highlight what I believe to be the importance of the, of the recreation in the county. First, we, we primarily focus on our youth sports that has built. A character and success that is now at the high school and soon to be at the college level. I think we all can be proud of. Of the success that many of our, our kids have had. And if they didn't go and play after junior middle school or, or high school, they have still had relationships and built character. All the way through. So we're pleased with that, the way that's going. Classes, that can be geared more to adults, exercise and challenging games. And other types of things that are going on in the community. Programs and wellness and I'll tell you, show you the importance of that in just a moment. We do have after-school programs and summer programs and various offerings. Our recreation is family driven. There's generations of, of families and kids that have gone through our recreation program in the county. And also have played in the private sector at the various offerings that we've had. And then the final note on this is that if we can develop and continue to attract visitors in the county. What we wanted to do is, is very obvious. We wanted to come, we wanted to go, we wanted to leave money behind. And that's what tourism is all about. And we're gonna try to develop more opportunities for that. Want to call your attention to a study from the Robert Johnson Wood Foundation. It's a national foundation that. Works with all 50 states to develop health rankings. And Virginia has had this study for, for a number of years. And this is the 2022 rankings for, for our state. And I picked out the, the localities that. That are near us or part of our original group. First of all, Falls Church in the rankings, there's 133 localities in Virginia that are ranked both counties and cities. Falls Church is number one. And if you go all the way to the bottom with Petersburg, they're 133. The lower the ranking, the better off you are. This study is based on health factors, health outcomes. It's not just individual health, but it's the quality of life and of a community. In a number of different ways, I would encourage, we've had it on our website for a while, I've written it in my blog. But I would encourage anyone who. Wants to find out more about this to, to go to, to go to and read the whole thing. Because I think you'll get a good understanding as to what the study is all about. Chris, did I do that?
Interestingly, we, we hear. Us, they, we need to be water clean and clean. And this particular ranking, that's something you certainly don't want to do.
They don't even have a box in the right.
Well, where we're positioned is, is very strong. To be 44 out of 133 localities, that says a lot for, for this community already. And obviously, some of your bigger, more established counties are going to have more opportunities to have more programs that lead. That lead to increased health factors. Hanover and New Kent aren't that far from us, but. You know, we have ways to go. Gloucester slipped a little bit ahead of us. But as you go down, further down the list with Matthews and Carolina, Middlesex and Dean, Queen and Essex. We're doing very well in the, in the rankings. And this is a, this is a study that the entire community, over 18,000 people combined to and take responsibility for. Because we're ranked in a number of different ways, as, as again, I encourage you to look at the, at the study and see more about it. If you're looking at the current recreation opportunities in the county and where they are held. We have the 360 rec center that is really working out very well since the county developed that. Of course, the recreation park, that's the center of our, of all the activity in the, in the summer and fall. The private sector produces Queen Field Golf Club that is really an underutilized. I believe facility in this county. It's, it's marketed very well. I intend to go out and meet the owner here soon. To see how we can develop better partnerships. I know the high school utilizes that facility for its, for its golf team. But we, we have a Joel there and I don't think the average person really knows it's out there. We have two state forests that really, you know, there's a difference between a state forest and a state park. Our forests are not meant to be parks, but they do provide recreational opportunities. Hiking, kayaking, other, other kinds of picnicking maybe. And we want to develop partnerships closer with them. We have the Dawn School of Dance. It's located on Route 360. Elite Force Athletics, that's in Commerce Park. I believe that's cheerleading. And in West Point, we have YMCA. We have the school facilities with the Riverwalk Park. And then we have the Country Club, which is also a good, a nicely groomed golf course up there. And then we do have some limited river access for fishing. And I believe this is an opportunity where we certainly can, can do better. Our school facilities and we're very fortunate to have. Penguin Schools is our partner. Dr. Wade is with us tonight. We're thanking publicly for the relationship that we have in the school board. We have rectangular fields at the middle school and the elementary school complex that we, we use for football and soccer. There's a walking track at the high school. I don't know how open it is, but maybe after school or on weekends, but. That's an opportunity obviously for people to utilize. And then the gymnasiums at the high school. And then the gymnasiums at the high school and the Hamilton homes are certainly just essential for us to be able to hold our programs. Not just in the winter with basketball, but also for our after-school programs and the summer programs that we have. Potentially, these are four areas that I think you're going to find, that we're going to be looking at in the future. The Lanning Road property, I believe at one time, that was utilized for recreation. It's kind of grown up and needs a little, needs a little attention. Newport News has some property on the Mattinat River that we might want to go after. There's property adjacent to the Route Thirty Convenience Center, which is also a possibility. And then the courthouse property, that is something you're going to see in a survey in a minute. That seems like it's an untapped resource all around, all around this property that we, that we own. In a week or two, you're going to hold a public hearing, and you're going to consider adoption of the twenty forty-one comprehensive plan. The planning commission has already done this. This has been over a year in its development, and it has significantly invested time in looking at the recreation opportunities for the county. And these are four bullets that were taken directly from the plan to pursue improvements and expansion of the rec park. To pursue shared recreational facilities at schools or other public facilities. To facilitate the expansion of recreation-based activities and businesses, i.e. state forests and private ventures. And then enhance river access and pursue recommendations for additional river access points. Those are the four that seem to handle, I really believe that they did it right on when they developed the plan. If we spend our time and any resources that we can contribute to that, it's going to make a huge difference in expanding recreation in the county. The Recreation Advisory Commission, which Mr. Barber is a member of, took a survey among its members. They asked five questions, and here are the questions and the results. Where would you like to see recreation expansion prioritized? And the number one answer was around the county courthouse complex. The question number two is what project you think should be the first priority for the community? And sometimes you have to invest in what you have in order to expand recreation. And we have a number of people, of our members on the commission have heard from people saying that we desperately need to look at the parking at the rec park. And try to figure out a way to accommodate the huge crowds that are coming as those sports continue to grow. The third question is what project you think should be the second priority for the community? And that's additional fields for soccer, football, and possibly baseball. Even though we have a nice rec park that is primarily baseball, it's not going to be able to hold the growth of the community for much longer. We had ten T-ball teams this year. And if you put ten, I think there were eleven or twelve kids in each state, you figure it out. Because you know, the parents and the grandparents and the aunts and uncles, that's the age group that they go watch. You can just imagine the number of cars that were up around the rec park from those, on those deep flood. What project do you think should be the third priority for the community? Soccer fields and waterfront development was the winner. And then question number five, if Parks and Rec Department was to apply for a grant, what do you think would be the best option? And it was voted number one as way in acquisition, which makes certainly a lot of sense. Land is expensive, and if you can get some help to do it, that's a good thing. We have three items in the FY twenty-three capital funding that we're recommending the board to approve in its budget this evening. Fifty thousand for continued improvements to the field at the rec park. We have a great facility out there, but there's still some fundamental things that need done. Dugout covers, looking at the fields as a whole, there's dirt improvements. We have no irrigation process out there, we need to start looking at that. So that fifty thousand could possibly be eaten up pretty quickly, but it's still going to make huge improvements. As we look to host All-Star Games and even travel wall at that facility in the future. There's also twenty-five thousand dollars that's set aside for the construction of walking trails and a fishing pond at the rec park. There used to be both of those up there, and again, that's been allowed to grow over, over the years, and we're looking to bring that back. And then a hundred thousand dollars has been suggested for a partnership with the Department of Forestry. To help upgrade some of the facilities at Sandy Port and Zor. We know that we can't do it ourselves, but they have very, very limited funding, but you know. And we're just looking for some kind of a partnership. And matter of fact, there's a team that's going to be visiting both of those state forests on Wednesday to look firsthand as to what some of the needs might be. So as we move forward, we'd like to develop an in-depth plan for this expansion. And in order to do that, we need to seek outside consultants who have expertise in developing these kind of plans. We will be seeking quotes to try to get a good price. And we will come back after we've developed the cost of the plan to share with the board and ultimately seek your approval. And once that plan is presented, we will discuss it. And then the implementation stage will start along with, obviously, the comprehensive plan as it's suggested. So no action tonight, gentlemen, but just wanted to bring this forward and ask, I guess, if there's any action, we'll be to go to the next step and get the quotes from the plan.
Who's heading this up?
Yes, and our recreation team, Miss Hopman, and of course, Sherry Graham with the planning, and Steve obviously knows the territories. And this is a group effort, there's no doubt.
Let me say, Ash Brad, has anybody reached out to Newport News to find out what the price is on that piece of property?
Okay.
That was Scotland land.
It was eight hundred and seventy-five.
Oh, they've gone way up.
Yeah.
I was trying to buy a piece of property in Carolina, and they purchased for mitigation purposes, they were going to flood it. They were ready to sell it for a fraction of the price they got it at, phrase, price went through the roof. That is a nice piece of property.
I thought they had given it all to real estate or had a plan of doing it, is that correct?
Newport News, Newport News is handling the sale of the larger parcels. There's one in Hanover that they bought for mitigation, there's one in Carolina that metal park. They and the Scotland land property, the rest of them, they did thorough, they were a real estate agent, I think it's Sears relative. They sold some of those properties all around.
But we'll be covering all kinds, looking at under all rocks to see what we can do.
I'd like to suggest that maybe put a section on the website to allow public comment. Though we rarely allow that, but sort of input their thoughts.
It would be my intention, as we do have a consultant retain, that we follow the same process they did with the call claim, that we would seek public, public input. I know the rec, the rec commission certainly has their thoughts, but I think we need to broaden a little bit to the general public as a whole. Is it okay to move forward then?
It's almost back into the four hundred and forty-four rating we have. We need to stay focused on the science, the science behind this, and it goes back to that rating.
The more investment you make, the lower opportunity you have for that, for that scoring to get better.
But yes, for me, I say this, move to the next step. It's an ambitious point. I would love to see it.
Good, thank you very much.
Next, we have the administration building called our security system update, Mr. Travis.
Good evening, gentlemen. So a quick update, we previously have talked about some of the upgrades that we're doing at the current courthouse. Extending out to the A-Lot office, the sheriff's satellite office. We've also obtained a couple of quotes for this building along the museum and BJ Triple C, right at the building right behind his post office. So we will be adding card access entry into those buildings, keeping keys internally, but also adding cameras throughout various places.
This provides tracking of who's been there.
Correct.
And when.
That is correct. Admin staff currently have badges, but none of them are the ID badges. We'll be changing those out in the sheriff's office to get those reprinted, or that will allow them access. Depends on which system we go with, currently the system is at the sheriff's office. We choose to go with that company, we've already got fiber across all the buildings, so it'd be the same mother system, so to speak, that would power the entire.
And also, your office would manage this program?
That is correct. For the admin building, Sheriff will still hold all the access to his.
As well as the other buildings.
Correct. We've also talked to the, this is the, not necessarily, we talked in phases, but this was the first step. We also want to include Parks and Rec, eventually we can build this out. Whichever company we go with, since there's network connection to all of our buildings, we can also put this firing device. But this building specifically will have cameras on each fourth corner to monitor the parking lots in the lobby, down both halls, and one in this room. Key access cards will be each wing and a private entrance. The museum will have two card access, the main door coming in plus the back door. The camera will be on the corner, looking back across the campus. We will not touch the historic courtroom due to having to drill or put an arboreal that kind of changes the classification of that. And then the BJ Triple C building will have key card access to both doors.
Is there a plan to do something with the lighting around this?
Have not had that discussion, but I can.
I don't think those cameras are going to work very well out there.
That's all the new ones I are.
So there are always going to be PTZ cameras. But we can definitely look into the lighting.
We probably need lighting in anyway out there.
The meaning, I believe, changed their light bulbs recently, they don't do that out there. We've looked at the possibilities out here, we either have plans, new lights or additional lights, what's there, we can't get it right here.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Ms. Durham comes up, to allow me the opportunity to make a few remarks regarding the budget. Tonight, you have before you consideration of FY twenty-three budget. And it's taken months of planning, and a public hearing was held on April the eleventh. And this spending plan begins July one, and it awaits your approval this evening. I presented my budget recommendations to you on March fourteenth. And since that time, this board has heard from county residents at the April eleventh public hearing. And also through in-person conversations, phone calls, emails, and even text messaging. You've made adjustments here, you've added and subtracted there, and you've come up with a budget. That in my opinion is responsible, that very responsive to the critical needs of our residents. And it has a vision, it has the opportunity for growth and the changes that are ahead for this county. This budget fits perfectly into that vision. But, Mr. Chairman, before I note what is in the budget briefly, let me highlight to you what is not. There are no increases on any tax now being paid by King William Red. As a matter of fact, this board, through its deliberations, has agreed to reduce the real estate tax rate from eighty-six cents to eighty-three and a half cents. That's an overall savings of over four hundred thousand dollars to county taxpayers. For personal property, there is also no increase in that rate. And later this summer, this board will decide when the overall value to assess vehicles. With the opportunity possibly cap the percentage and save county taxpayers even more on their vehicle bills. Every spending plan, and this is what this is, it's crafted to enhance the quality of life of our residents. And there are numerous examples in this budget of how every sector of our community, and I emphasize, every sector of our community will benefit from this budget. In addition to the tax savings that I just previously mentioned. You're making heavy investments in the critical area of public safety. In order to keep our community safe, so that people know that when they call the sheriff's desk. Or they ask for a fire truck or an ambulance by dial nine-one-one, that they're going to be there. This budget improves response times for both of those public safety entities, helps with their vehicle. It helps with the ability for them to respond and get people the help that they need. This budget also, Mr. Chairman, provides a quality education, continuing to do that for our young people in the King William County School Division. This board has stepped up and responded to the request of the superintendent and the school board. And this provides educators with competitive salaries and maintains programs and resources for our students that will only continue to help that generation. This budget funds the offices of our constitutional offices and numerous outside organizations that provide valuable services to our citizens. And this includes social services and our health department and regional entities such as animal service. Jail service, juvenile and adult probation services, all that's going on with the regional planning commission. And yes, the regional library. Mr. Chairman, there's also an aggressive capital program that Ms. Durham just touched on as a spinoff from FY twenty-two. We're looking to expand that in FY twenty-three. And the signature plan of that capital investment is the expansion of broadband throughout this entire county. Something that I know that this board has fought for for a long time, and with a partnership to the feds and your local contributions. We're going to make that happen within, hopefully, an eighteen-month period, once the agreement to do, to move forward is transacted. And in addition to that capital plan, there's expansions of public water services to meet the growth in both housing and future economic development. And it also calls for expanded recreation projects that we just talked about. Where young and old residents can enjoy green space, or they can enjoy a nice opportunity along the rivers. This budget continues to make investments in our employee base. We're an organization, we grow. We need to be able to have our employees have competitive salaries and be able to fill the gaps within our ranks. To where we continue to offer the most proficient and efficient services that we can to every single resident of this county. You have done that for us, and we're asking you to do that through the addition of our salary increases and also the addition of six new positions. Mr. Chairman, this budget maintains an unsigned cash reserve of seven point two million dollars, which is twenty-four percent. To many, that seems like excessive. And yes, it is above your policy of twenty percent. But I believe it's only the responsible thing. But I believe it's only the responsible thing for this county to always be aware that there are unusual chain of events that can happen at the drop of a hat in which large funds of money have to be expended to protect the public good of our county. And also, don't forget the peaks and the valleys that you have with cash flow throughout the budget year. As again, our finance director just just pointed out in her in her report. Mr. Chairman, the total budget is sixty-nine million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand and forty-five dollars. Now, this amount does not include certain federal and state funds that still have to be ascertained uh to the school division. But that is the core of the amount of money that you're being asked to approve this evening. And I would note that that increase from FY twenty-two is a bit misleading. Because federal funds from the American Rescue Rescue Act, which we just talked about, for broadband specifically, they're included in that overall total. And that the FY twenty-one audit has not been completed. And those numbers will reflect the actual spending as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. This budget was crafted following the state statute of twenty-fourteen that provides funding for the town of West Point. The school division and county government government is a balanced budget, is a budget that is responsible, and I believe that every resident benefits from, as I said earlier. Mr. Chairman, staff recommends the adoption of this budget. And staff thanks each and every one of you for your input into the final numbers that have been contained as we've worked together to give this point. Thank you very much.
So, resolution twenty-two dash thirty-five is presented tonight for the board's consideration to approve FY twenty-twenty three budget.
Mr. Chairman, the adoption.
Sir.
We have motion and talking in second, any discussion?
Just just one thing that it hurts me, but I don't think it would be responsible to honor the regional library. I wish we could do it to keep the hours at what they are. But apparently they kicked their heels in and we've asked to negotiate and it's no negotiation there. See, all or nothing, all I'm here. And uh uh previous budget, because I think it's responsible.
Yes, I'd like to say something. You know, I haven't made any secret along the way. I was fully on board with it until we where we are now, uh fuel prices up and down the nineteen seventy in the past week with four dollars and twenty-five cents in a gallon. Uh eight five twenty-five, all of that correlates into inflation. Right now, inflation is eight point five percent. And we're, I'm I'm still against the the new positions. I'll share this email with y'all, I think, this afternoon, I don't know whether y'all had a chance to see it or not, but uh so far as the dispatchers go, there are eleven funded dispatchers for the budget of twenty twenty-two. Right now, we tell them, oh, if the ads is for two more. And with the with the with that is, we are twenty twenty-three. We still have uh sixteen thousand dollars for overtime, no, twenty-six thousand for overtime and another sixteen thousand for part-time nine-eleven dispatch. So if we're if we're hiring those those two additional dispatchers, we already won short. That probably drove the overtime. So now we're looking at twenty-six thousand plus ASN recommended for overtime and another sixteen thousand for part-time dispatch.
Mr. Chair, we are in discussion on the budget, but I thought we've already done it. You know, with the.
I was I was right, and I said, made the same statement there.
I understand.
So, you know, I just want everybody to know why I'm not going to vote for it, and I said.
Yeah. No discussion, I said I'm against it as well, because I said this is a bad time, COVID is coming back. We should never have had thirty-five percent unsigned fund balance to begin with. We shouldn't have collected that much, we should give the money back to the citizens. I said that in the past too, and everybody says, um, it's nice what the the administrator says to have twenty-four percent. Yes, it's nice to have the case of emergency. I wish I had twenty-five percent in my savings account to save an emergency, but uh because I can't afford to save that much, but that's why I'm not going to vote for it either, because the people have complained and they said they can't pay these bills. They just can't. COVID prices, gas, it's just all. We don't need to be finding ways to spend the citizens' money just because we have it. It's not what's there.
Well, I I disagree with sentiment, but um and that probably predictably would 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 agree that what we've got here is is a good document. Um I think it's unfortunate that we're we're going to split on it over over one area or another. Um, you know, I've 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 been willing to kind of sit back and let the library issue kind of kind of go the way that it's it's gone. I think most of you that have been on the board with me, or that at least have seen me operate uh know that I would very much uh like to uh to see that uh need funded to the level that they think is appropriate. However, um I think, given the way that these budgets work and are crafted and are done, I I was perfectly willing to uh accept where uh one might fall short or we're able to fill the need in in other areas. And so uh I I didn't feel too aggrieved at the at the final outcome. Um and so again, I find it unfortunate that we'd be splitting over over one issue that that didn't go our way when when perhaps another issue did. Um but I would just say in in any case that uh it's surprisingly, this has been one of the more difficult budgets that I participated in. It's not necessarily been one of the more, you know, grinding and onerous processes, but I think from a decision to decision, you know, actually in the process, the work with this board has been some of the most difficult work that I've participated in. And I've been pleased that we've we've come to where we are, I thought, with relative certainly equanimity, I think, along the way. If 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 nothing else, but there have been ideas shared, and there have been ideas that have gained traction, and there have been ideas that have fallen fallen by the wayside. But I think, again, we were faced with more difficult decisions this year than I was I was anticipating. And um, yes, I'm I'm happy we have what we what we have. You know, and I the 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 unsigned fund balance, the investments that we've been able to make with with that money, I mean, in in broadband is is got to be the gold star, um are going to be transformative. Quite frankly, so so I'm very pleased with the work we've done on on that side of it as well. So I'm 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 glad to let my support to budget forward voting in there.
I know I'll reach, but but I almost say one more thing. Just so everybody does remember, the library was asking for a thirty percent increase of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a four hundred and forty thousand dollar budget, I mean, in one year. And to be honest with what Travis just said, I was at Jerusalem Church at a at a meeting uh with Mr. Whitman, and the biggest thing that people are talking about and want is broadband even in the economy, where you're in a and.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hey.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Ms. Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
Hi. Resolution twenty-two thirty-five. Moving on to the appropriation phase.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-six is presented tonight for board's approval to appropriate funding for FY twenty-twenty-three.
We were, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Moving to second, any discussion?
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Ms. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
Hi. Thank you.
Yeah.
I would like to, once again, to then, to address back to your staff. The most transparent, my, this is my third budget, of course. Good level of detail, I think the department has understood what they were being asked to and why. Working with the schools, Dr. White, his staff, and it's arduous, I won't say it's a flood, but we got through, we have a good understanding of what each other needed and how we got there. So I was very, very pleased with the outcome. Here we are tonight voting on things and we had disagreements, but that's that's the democratic process, so it is. It is. Gentlemen, supervisory requests, so Mr. Garber, go ahead, please.
Uh, if we could, I'd like for someone to reach out to Hampton Rose to find out what they're asking for that part.
I really just have to try to push forward the Vexa site, like I said, some abroad does does need the upgrades, but it's a good need, and I didn't know that there was some land in Port Newton there too, that we went on to look into, like I said. There's a lot of issues with that as well, and I don't think we can look into that or not, except the contract stated that it was all supposed to be sold at the same price they bought it for. But since they haven't filed the contract since the beginning, it doesn't seem like they're doing that now, as Mr. Garber was saying, there's some piece of property worth eight hundred thousand dollars, and they didn't buy it for eight hundred thousand dollars. And I said, it wasn't anything against any of my fellow board members, as we said, that we all worked continually and everything was good. It wasn't a conflict, like we had some boards, as Travis knows what I'm speaking about. There's no animosity, I mean, for sure, but I just have to stick with what I'm believing in while I'm on this board twelve years ago, so that's the reason I did it. That's like, he said, this is the democratic process, so that's the way it has still passed, so. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Mr. Miskowski.
Um, since we spent some time tonight talking about broadband, we are in Q two, and it would be nice to maybe get a quarterly update on broadband and a little ahead um as we go through the year.
Sorry. Can't believe that's it, Travis. And and Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Garber, I wouldn't be proud of you if you didn't vote the way you do. I'll be honest with you, it's the way it's supposed to be, and not over angry as as Greenwood.
I'm certainly not angry, I just felt like that's the way I had to go.
And and that's the way you should go, but I thank you, and that's all I really am, and thank everybody for coming, as always.
I don't have anything, uh just that we are right now waiting on March twentieth as our new deadline to sign the contract with HCD and our close. So we hope to have something to report.
Be committed, you mean.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion. We have a close here, I got mine marked, but I I didn't.
I still have my.
Oh, I'm sorry. You did call.
Okay, if we could have a motion to convene a closed session.
All right, Mr. Chairman, according to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Virginia Board Supervisors' Convoy meeting to consider a personal matter involving performance. And I have legal matters also checked, if that's correct.
Yeah, you got A one for personnel involved in the performance of specific public employee in twenty-two thirty-seven eleven eight-eight, consulting legal counsel on specifically a matter regarding possible restructuring, which requires provision of legal advice.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Ms. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Uh.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
For that, close session, we should.
Ms. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in S R one.
Moving to second, Mr. Brad.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Ms. Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in Durham.
Sir.